All right. Oh, my goodness. It's 5:01.
2:34.
5:07. A quorum is present, so I'll call the meeting to order and ask for a motion to approve tonight's board meeting agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Joseph and a second from Bonnie. All in favor? All right. Are there any opposed? Okay. Uh, next up. Item on the agenda is public discussion. Are there members of the public who'd like to address it?
That.
Okay, you're a member of the public, which I can address.
Sorry.
Do we have a five minute?
That's sad.
Yeah, and we don't get to engage with you.
Yeah, we're fine. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Melody Warack. I'm a librarian at Collection Services. You'll see me publicly on the info desk, and I am going to be the staff representative on the working group that's coming up. Um, so just a little bit about my background. Um, I have some experience with project management, uh, communication. I'm on a communication committee. Uh, so I, I keep in touch with staff a lot. Um, and I've also worked with consultants in events and meetings. So I kind of do a little bit of everything, um, this in the past 13 years that I've worked here. Um, and anything else? Um, yeah, I'm just really excited to be a part of the group and to be representing staff in the best way possible. Um, and yeah, can't wait to stay at the work.
Thanks, Mel. Any others that would care to address the board? All right. Uh, we're on item four A, Director Evaluation Discussion, and this is a place holder to allow, we completed the Director Evaluation Process. Using the new process for the first time, it's just an opportunity, if there are any thoughts about how we did it, that we could record so that next time, uh, do things differently, if there are thoughts.
Has there been a debate with Eric about any options we have, or this is just the given for system?
Nothing new. We're waiting for a Supreme Court decision.
So no comments.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Who knows? Yeah, okay. Our next item, four B, is to, um, appoint an interim library director. And after conversations with Ellsworth and with Anne, I'd like to recommend to the board that we appoint Anne Mangano as interim director to serve uh, from the first day after Ellsworth's resignation, which will be May 20th. Um, until a new librarian has been selected. Um, and uh, after conversations with Anne and with City HR, I would recommend that Anne be paid 10% above her current salary during the time that she serves as interim. And that, in addition, we compensate her with an additional week of vacation to be awarded on the completion of her interim service. She won't need it. Um, and has a good plan for how um, her current workload will be managed through a combination of a little bit of backfill to cover some desk time. Um, a little bit of shifting, and it has to be this way, putting some projects on pause. Um, yeah. Uh, I think she's thought pretty carefully about that. Um, and the other thing that I would put into a a motion when we get there is that, um, after serving as interim, Anne's salary would return to her current salary plus any across the board increase that she would have been eligible to receive during the time she served as interim. So thoughts?
Those were the two questions I had, compensation and plan for, yeah.
Yep. I move, we have Ann as a library director.
Okay.
The all that information you just shared.
Okay, 10% salary bump, one week additional vacation, return to current salary plus across the board increases she would otherwise be eligible for.
Vacation recovery time.
Yeah, right.
It's one big thing.
Yeah. So I have a motion. Did you get that, Jen? Because we want to make sure that's right, uh, minutes.
Oh, seconded.
Okay. Uh, we'll, we'll take Claire's second. Oh. Uh, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, Anne, for going in. Um, before we move on, um, I don't know uh, exactly what we can provide, but it's nice when someone comes into an interim position for them to have an expectation of what their boss wants done during that interim period. Um, we're going to be Anne's boss on May 20th, so, uh, if there are any thoughts about, um, what we're expecting from her as interim director. Thought we could just share those and she can begin the joy of reporting to a board and try to synthesize what we say into a meaningful direction.
We talked a lot last time, I think, about the timing of this and the strategic plan and also the fiscal year kind of rolling all together. So I think that's where my first thoughts are. That managing this change from one fiscal year to the next, including the budgeting that we're going to have to do to manage the consultant is a thought that I'm having at first and also the end of this. Um, I assume that we might put our next strategic plan on hold and leave that for a new director. But then there's a little gap there too, so I guess I don't really have an idea of what that would look like, but isn't it, is that true that we're wrapping up the, maybe I'm wrong, that we're not actually wrapping up the strategic planners, that one more year?
One more year.
Oh, one more year. Okay, sorry, I'm off a year.
With the planning that'll start.
But the planning for a new, you know, like, it's gonna have to be some.
Right, right, yeah, so.
Not there.
Yeah, so we'll hope that Anne can manage that, like, so that we don't uh, so we're ready when a new director arrives to get into a planning mode.
Because that will be an expectation for our new director to be able to jump right into that.
So what is the plan for introducing Anne to professional colleagues? Um, just to, to reinforce that there's stability and there's a wide government.
So now that the appointment has been made, um, I'll start inviting Anne to, to come to stakeholder meetings and that kind of thing. Um, and then we will meet to go over in-progress projects, um, some higher level HR, um, situations, kind of getting up to date on all those pieces.
That's my concern is just that we look like a stable entity to our partners and to our donors, so that there is a plan in place.
We thought we would use the, um, announcement of an interim being appointed and my debrief to, to also introduce that, and we're looking at at a public, a, a small scale, a public event that I think can also function as an introduction to both of those pieces.
Perfect. Any other, other thoughts? Uh, Sam was telling us that there's a draft press release, uh, ready to, ready to go announcing the appointment.
Great.
I think at some point, and I don't know when this might happen, but you mentioned that Anne has kind of a plan for what she sees happening. Perhaps after getting more information from Ellsworth and kind of strategizing on timeframe and that sort of thing. At some point, Anne, you could give a, a report to the board about what that plan looks like and sort of how you, how you see it all coming together.
Maybe your first director's report.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Uh, item four C, consider the future of standing committees. So we have really two standing committees, finance and advocacy, and the reason I wanted us to talk about them is because I have gradually come to understand that those committees are subject to open meetings laws. Um, and that's not the end of the world, you know, they, they could do their work in public, but it does mean more formality. There has to be a published agenda, have to stick to the agenda. Um, and have to hold the meeting in a place that the public can attend, you know, so not going to meet in a coffee shop to do that. Um, if you wanted to meet by Zoom, you'd have to publish that link and all that sort of stuff. So I wanted to, uh, open a, um, discussion about whether we want to continue those, um, committees. Um, there's always the possibility of, um, a future board president saying, hey, could a couple of people work on this thing? Um, and, and get back to us, um, as opposed to these, uh, standing committees. Now, I have one more, uh, thought, which, or one more, um, sub-issue, which is our bylaws actually call for a nominations committee, which we'll report tonight. That committee should be meeting as a public meeting, uh, which strikes me as awkward. Um, uh, we don't have to deal with that right now. That's a, that's a, you know, the bylaws call for an appointment of a nominations committee next February, so I think we should just um, make a mark that we want to consider the bylaws. The other place in the bylaws that committees come up is a, um, specific requirement that the full board approve the president's appointment to any search committee, basically. Well, we won't be having search committees of that form in the future, so. Um, but I'm, yeah.
We need a bylaws revision also for the sound future meeting.
Yeah, I, I think we're gonna need the bylaws revised and we can start that process now, but it, it's also not urgent.
So the finance committee is clearly, we're writing this in the last year or two.
Yeah.
And has that I mean, has that been a hopeful thing for us or the committee members or you as the director?
Oh, sharing being on that committee, what I shared with Tom by email, I certainly felt like I learned a lot and it was helpful for my understanding. As far as helping library staff, I don't know that we've offered much of that deeper understanding and, you know, brought up some questions that often come up again in the regular board meetings, so I'm certainly comfortable with that change.
Are you saying to eliminate the committee or to move to a working group?
To eliminate the committee.
Yeah.
Have a working group if needed. I, yeah. I mean, I could see more of a projects based, uh, if something comes up, but in terms of reviewing regular finance. Yeah, I think that that would be just fine.
I would say it has been helpful to be able to have a little bit more focused and longer form conversations with trustees about sort of finance questions, but at this point, it does feel like the group has like normalized quite a bit in terms of uh, we've worked out a memo that feels like it's functional and it gives a lot of the information that was leading to, um, those more complex full board conversations. Um, so I think, I think sort of the ad hoc idea or, um, trying without it feels like, and I shared this at the last finance meeting, finance committee meeting, that we, um, we really have gotten to a point in the memo where it hits on the high notes of what, what's always asked, so I don't think it would be a mistake to try it without, and then I think Anne as the interim could certainly ask for, for that kind of meeting if needed.
My thought is, during the point of transition with interim, looking at Anne, when playing this, that there may be value in having a few board members work with you, whether it's a committee or an ad hoc working group during this period of change. But the committee knows, we know better. I'm just thinking, you know, we may be looking at this in two stages. One is during this interim.
Yeah.
Or one is for a permanent structure.
I think the formalized memo has really helped, like, that's kind of a building block now that we have it in the packet and the way it's laid out. It's really helpful to me to read it, the highs and lows of the budget and as it stands each time we look at it and but now there's a roadmap that is public that someone in the future would, could look at as well. So it's kind of I'm fine with it being ad hoc as needed. Because we don't know, yeah, what will we need?
And I, I think, um, that's a very good point about the interim. The director can always ask one or two or three board members to look at something. Um, and I would encourage you to use board members wherever you think it would be useful. There it doesn't have to be a committee, um, to do that. So I'm hearing we can live without the finance committee. How about advocacy or other sort of standing committee?
I don't think we can dissolve it. But I don't, but we've already talked about how having a formalized process just doesn't work for the timeliness of the work.
Right.
So it would have to be, I don't know, you have more experience than I do, but I would say that it would have to be informally working group.
Yeah, I would refer a working group too, and I, I think it has some seasonal patterns to when it's active, and so a standing committee may not be the best structure. But there isn't necessarily a year long, the need on the ad hoc of our working group may fit our needs better during legislative seasons.
Yeah, so I, I think a form that could take is in November, extra two tempers, um, the president asks for a couple of volunteers to keep an eye on legislative issues and inform the board, and then the board might say, hey, could you write something up on that that we could look at? But I think that would be, um, I think a pass muster as a, not a formal committee, so, yeah.
And maybe we won't make that.
I think you just called me an optimist, Robin, earlier. Oh, I get you.
And said I must say.
Yeah, right.
2026, November 2026.
So I don't honestly know for sure that whether we need a motion to eliminate the standing committees, because I don't remember if there was a motion that created them, but I figure it couldn't hurt to have a motion to, uh, eliminate these two committees, so.
I'll have to eliminate them if the motion is needed.
Okay. Anne, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's get nervous, sir. Motion, motion died. We do have a motion in the second, so all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
So do we need to add the bylaws revision to the future?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, let's talk about that for just a second. We could do that certainly as soon as our next meeting, and if we want to do that, I would ask the city attorney to look at the bylaws and say, um, you know, let's, let's do, let's do this. I'll do that, but also let's push it one more month, let's push it into June and ask all of you to look at the bylaws and say if there's any, then we can have a discussion if there's anything else that needs to be changed next month, when that passes the city attorney vote in June, so.
Changes be two meetings?
Uh, they need 10 days' notice, but I don't.
We don't need to vote twice.
I don't think so.
It looks like the bylaws are on the schedule for August.
Oh, are they scheduled for August?
Well, a lot of new people. That's true. That's a, I, I think it's a challenge of casting new trustees to say change the bylaws.
Yeah, we accelerate that.
That is true. The first time we changed bylaws when I was on the board, I was very
Oh, it was a mess.
unsure of my own.
So shall we accelerate that one and do its preliminary discussion at our May meeting with the name of a final, uh, decision in June?
I think that's a good plan because things will be fresh in our minds.
Right.
Yes.
Right, yes.
That's good too.
Okay. Uh, that brings us to four D, election of officers. Uh, Hannah, um, served on what was the nominating committee, in fact, and has volunteered to present the slate that, uh, when he came up with.
So DJ, Tom and I, uh, would like to propose Robin as our board president. I can't remember if we did share a private. Uh, Dan as our vice president and Claire as the secretary for the coming fiscal year.
And all these people privately agreed to do it, so. Uh, if, if, if elected, they will serve. Are there any nominations from the floor? Uh, hearing none, um, I'll entertain a motion to elect the slate presented.
So moved.
Moved by Bonnie, second by John. All in favor?
I, I.
Are there any opposed? Congratulations, all of you, and thank you for being willing to, uh, serve, that's it's good if you.
We'll be the veterans. We are all of the veterans.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
My whole. Three years.
Can I just check, Jen, did we miss, uh?
Oh, shoot.
Vote on, on C?
C. No, we had a motion.
There was a motion, there was a vote, okay.
And a vote, I'm sorry.
It didn't go to.
Yeah. Um, that brings us to the board recognition discussion, so I'll just be honest and say I think, and I was, I'm not really sure exactly what this item is, so I was a fool.
So before the COVID closure, there was a regular event, I'm not gonna say annual because I don't think it was truly every year, but it was regular, um, to acknowledge the work of trustees, to have an opportunity to kind of come together outside of a meeting and celebrate achievement. Um, we did one two, two years ago or last year.
Actually, like last year.
Last year, um, and, but, uh, Jen had the wherewithal to talk to Eric about, does that constitute an open meeting? And, uh, we think not, so as long as it's not, um, there's not time spent talking about active library business, but it's okay to recognize past success and to talk about progress that has been done and things like that. So the big questions right now are would you like to have one planned, and if so, what month would you like staff to look at?
And last year, we did it, uh, and we solved a lot of problems by doing it in conjunction with a staff retreat, um, and that meant that we didn't have a lot of expense or, or planning, um, so uh, I guess that's a question. Is there a staff retreat schedule that we could coordinate it with?
No, we did one a few months ago. Um, we'll probably, there'll prob, there may be another one in the fall, but I'm kind of the, when we've done it, um. So I would say if you want to wait to add it to that, you might be looking at a fall date. But I think that there's a lot of flexibility if you'd rather do it sooner.
I don't ever I, what my memory of this is that last year it happened because we had an M line.
Six years.
Five years. Uh, and I thought they happened every other year when there was a major board transition. So the last, like, regular one was when Tom DJ and I joined in 2018. I don't think Tom or DJ went, I think it was just me.
I hope that I made it.
Uh, and it was the outgoing, I think, or together.
The idea is to introduce the incoming, rather than even to recognize the outgoing, so that there was an overlap, and I think I think it was annual when we had new people. If you didn't have anyone join, then there wasn't a need, but there are new people coming in, it was a priority, because they also historically, the supervisors, the coordinators would also be there and have a chance to meet the trustees and they could talk to the supervisors if they can, you know.
So that points to a July-ish, August-ish.
Or something. I mean, was that? Yeah, I think it was usually August, but I think they're getting we have to watch vacation schedules and recovery schedules, maybe.
Right.
And I think for us, it was at St. Virge. I don't know if that's the typical going out to a restaurant, and I think it was, it was different. It was over bricks, separate file, I forget the name of it. But I think the library maybe paid for trustee something.
Uh, now we're getting into part of the card.
Yeah, so I think that's the, the trustees being honored, and then I believe everyone else.
Everyone stayed their own, right, right?
I really liked the way we did it last year. I thought it was a good mix of providing food without the expense of a venue such as that. Catered by Oasis at the East End Recycle Center.
Always on board for Oasis.
Yeah, right.
Wouldn't it be also the search using one of our own rooms? And I would avoid the cost, but then we would maybe have to wait for the, for the staff retreat.
Yeah.
This is like, yeah.
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
So it sounds like maybe August at the library?
Yeah.
As long as it's early. Because, um, last week, I guess I'll definitely forget.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
They forget to show up.
My first year on the board, I forgot the August meeting. Get back to school.
I think I did last, because it was literally the first day of students or the Sunday of student wedding. Uh, maybe that should go in the, in November, December, we have a little early.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be under construction again this year, so I will definitely be forgetting or showing up swatty and dirty.
We can, we can say it in itself, and if, if August doesn't work, obviously, other dates could be looked at, but we could kind of start with those.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, okay. So next, we have the, um, adoption of the tentative FY26 wage rates. Um, that was ready, right, a little back down.
Sure, so this is reflective of the wage reopener that was part of the collective bargaining agreement, um, the city met with, asked me and represent the library in those conversations on the management side. And the recommendation has been the 2.75 across the board increase for next fiscal year. Uh, we can so now the, the board has an opportunity to to support this or not. I'm not absolutely sure what the process is, if you disagree with it, but we will help figure we will help you figure that out if you see it fit. Uh, but my understanding is that this represents um, a final agreement between the negotiating parties. I don't know, this is what either brought to the table at the beginning. Um, Anne was there if you have more specific questions about the actual negotiation conversation, but this is what's being, uh, put forward in the recommendation.
The council approved it on April 15th. Um, there will be a, they'll post it this next month to the time of agreement and then we'll finalize it then.
Do we actually have a vote on it according to this document? We're not even mentioned. Information is in the city council, says city councils to do it and uh, and the union ratify it.
Yeah.
Doesn't say anything about the board directors of the of the, of the board of trustees of the library.
Yes.
Traditionally, the library board signs as a third entity because we are a semi-autonomous department. Um, and I, on the contracts, the library board has signed so on wage reopener, other things like that. The library board has signed.
So the city council is not going to be dumbfounded if we send a a support of this.
There's, we did it a year ago, right?
Yeah.
It's a weird situation. We, we do participate in the negotiation, but we're really not going to have a different contract than the city has, that would be really hard to administer. Um, but we still have to say that we, uh, are adopting this agreement. Yeah. So.
So I move we adopt this agreement.
Thank you, Joseph.
Fine, thanks.
All in favor? Uh, any opposed? All right, thank you. Uh, and that brings us to the volunteer policy. We worked on this and did you want to say?
We passed, right, last month. It's just about finalizing our conversation.
And right.
Got you, thank you.
Some edits were made in, that reflect that conversation, so, um, Sam and Katie both worked on this and they are both here if there are more detailed questions.
Thanks for taking our conversation back.
Yes.
I would, uh, suggest cleaning up item C a little bit.
I think.
Uh, create and facilitate strong community connections so that volunteers become empowered in their knowledge and advocate for the library uh, in the, in the community. So it cuts out a lot of stuff in the larger community services and needs, which don't seem to be to add anything, just except verbiage somewhere. I don't think it changes any, the meaning of it.
Any other thoughts?
Would that take us an extra month for approval, or is there something we could make an adjustment right now?
I think we can just say, we can approve it with, uh,
With that.
John's amendment there.
Yeah.
And you can help supply that to Jen in case she didn't get it. Yeah, so, um, a motion to uh, approve the policy, uh, as amended.
I need to approve.
John's sure.
Policy 505 with John Splechink.
Be seconded.
Uh, I'll be, yeah, I'm sorry, all in favor? All right, any opposed? All right, any opposed? All right.
Almost sounded like you're in opposition now on this speaker.
I think the DJ's children is not sure about this, yeah. Okay, which brings us to library use policy, I'll speak on our.
So this is, this is a policy that we use a lot. We reference this internally and with patrons. I would say at least daily, um, and Jason led this committee. And it was a large staff committee, again, because of the significance of this policy. And Jason led sort of a multi-month process with his team, um, and got lots of feedback, not, not just from the members of the committee. But from other staff as well. So these, um. The changes that we suggested have had a lot of internal discussion, um, and I think that we're really equipped to talk through questions and thoughts about it. Historically, this policy has generated significant board conversation, because it covers some, some pretty. Um, pretty important parts of day-to-day service, um. And we'd, we'd love to hear thoughts on edits, um, and Jason is certainly willing to represent that committee in terms of how they came up with the language.
I just have one comment, and it's on, it'd be in the agenda, page fourteen. Eight oh nine point three zero one, where it starts the word sleeping. I found this sentence to be a little awkward. Um, so, cause it says sleeping, comma, that impacts a limited resource or while lying down. I think that needs to be reworded, so it makes a little more sense. Maybe say sleeping or lying down, which may interfere with the use of a limited resource or something like. It may interfere with the use, or say, may interfere with the availability of limited resources or furnishings even, you could say. There's something to kind of make that, make a little more sense.
I agree, it's awkward, and I want to endorse this amendment. I know sleeping was a, before I came on the board, there was a whole bunch of sleeping discussion, um. And honestly, I've napped in many loggers, so and sitting up, um, and I, I value that ability.
So for clarification, sleeping in one of our upholstered sofas is okay. As long as it's not disruptive of our services. I mean, this is use of resources, but I was also thinking disruptive of services. Uh, our use.
Since it would be lying down, I don't see that.
Well, if they're sitting up, I'm thinking, this is often the big sofa right up here, where people sleep, right here, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, we're okay with that. Cause I mean, you just know we're gonna be challenged on this, we are always.
I would consider that to be laying down, if you were laying down on the furniture.
No, but I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't speak clearly. I didn't mean lying down on the upholstered sofas, I mean, propped up sitting. Um, um, because we have a poster furniture and we just will have.
Yeah, you're in a seated position, yeah.
Okay, and you're, there you go.
Yeah.
Notice this as I walked into the board meeting today.
All right.
What do you wanna call it? Recumbent sleeping? Isn't that what we're talking about here? Now, uh, I, I wrote recumbent sleeping or upright sleeping. Uh, if they uh, block a resource or make it unavailable, is not something we permit.
I think we're coming to right, but I'm not sure if it's running through all our users.
Right.
Yeah, the other question I want to ask is, is the staff is comfortable with the enforcement of this? The sleeping policy is always difficult on staff.
Yeah, I think this mostly came about as a way to. Uh, split the difference here, where what we were finding, especially mostly just this winter, was um. Like groups of individuals on floor under furniture.
Right, nesting.
Uh, using the study rooms, uh, as. To honestly.
Study rooms, okay.
And so just a lot of like, not with the, the group in the room, and it's not what it's intended for, it's not like. We have a separate policy for that, actually. Um, and or just sort of people feeling like they can't have access to tables that were all like a, a person underneath each table. Four people in a row, all on the microphone, like, side, so it was just becoming kind of de facto. Resting places for people and daily.
So it can't.
It was sort of just becoming the norm, and so we were trying to figure out a way to reset expectations without, but it wasn't. You could do that as long, you'd have to try to find a different way to sort of say, you're blocking access to furniture that's not accessible right now.
Right.
And so this way, you were on a chair napping, as you're saying, which is sort of something that. We're not trying to cut down on people with their heads down after studying, which we always. Uh, this is normal, human behavior is more. And often it's just impacted by the, the weather and, and unavailable spaces for shelter. And we've seen huge decrease in that since the weather change. Uh, but this is just a way to reintroduce the norms of the library for when next weather event happens, or a super hot summer for cooling space. So, uh, sitting in the chair, sleeping feels a lot different than laying on the counter.
Or. And sitting in a chair also gives staff a little bit more like a visual checkpoint, so when we walk by and think. Gosh, that person is really still, and we wanna make sure that, that there are indicators that they're okay. Um, I think it's much more difficult to do that if somebody is under a table facing away from you, laying down than if they're relatively upright and chairy.
And then we have a separate document that's staff internal that is sort of how they implement, and that would sort of say, maybe broken our rule, or it's a expected. potentials of, of always breaking that rule. Sleeping has always been handled as a, um, very like not limited warning. A scenario, something, something really abusing the library in a much bigger way, like you refuse to get up, up. Keep not following the rules, um, to the point of. You have to be quite a nuisance to really, you know, before this version of the policy, there was a lot of like. Hey, I see you dozed off again, um, there'd be sort of like. We have little scripts where you sort of, maybe you should, you know, and take a walk or get some fresh air circulation. Um, and also, we did share this information with, um. Uh, Shelter House, uh, how are your representatives, um, Sam and Darren, um. No, like, direct feedback of great job or, or all, um, but just so you know, it's been shared with sort of relevant. People who might be able to explain that or give us direct feedback of actually being like this, and so both have seemed acceptable. Say the caveat of, again, no, neither of them said, great work. Either of them said. Everybody, no, library was terrible. We're always in conversation with affecting nerves. On two different, almost both groups, um. One directly related to city, um, building, and one for those, um, Johnson's, um, more social services, so, um. He has rights and communication and impact on. Also, I should mention Sam was my cohort on this, they're not here, I think maybe they're online, but they were, just so you know that Sam and I did this. What question? Of what all the staff knows.
One of the things that I was unsure of when I read it was specifically what is meant by limited resources? And I wondered if you could talk a little bit about the conversations around that and what you were trying to capture with that.
In particular.
Yeah, with this, yeah, sleeping, that would impact limited resources. What does that mean specifically?
I guess it could mean, uh, computers uh, could be considered, I guess it would depend on, um. To me, it would be a limited resource if you're at a computer and there's no computer available, or somebody's uncomfortable using it. Right. Uh, mostly, we're thinking of discussion rooms, um, separate policy for that again, but, um, this is about library usage.
Okay.
And it's all double, so.
When people were laying under tables, that also limits the seating of those, and sometimes they're in front of, um. If it's a database computer or somebody needs to use microphones or something like that, um, and sometimes, um. We have people who are looking for soft seating, and if people are, are laying on the available couches, that also feels like a limited resource.
I suppose it could be a case of, there are times when at the table. Um, I don't necessarily perceive us walking around and sort of saying, no, there's zero available tables right now. See, three people asleep in this three tables.
So sometimes it's okay to be sleeping, but other times it's not. And the difference is that some amenity that's supposed to be available to everyone is blocked.
Yeah.
By somebody that's, that's so, recumbent sleeping, but, but even seated sleeping can do that.
Yeah.
As it does at the uh, computer turns.
Yeah, someone who's sleeping at a computer.
Yeah, I, 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 again, I tried this, I, I, recumbent sleeping or seated sleeping that limits other patrons' access. To a physical uh, amenity is basically pro- uh, prohibited.
I think you make a good point. I don't know if we care about posture, if, oh, we do care about posture, because you can't share it on them.
Is there some aspect of this that's about the kinds of use of the item, like, you know, the. The study room is meant to be used as a study room. The chair is meant to be as a chair.
On that topic, does the study room policy address sleeping? And that might be a simple way to put. Uh, this was sort of the hope of like capturing the building. Yeah. Uh, so that we wouldn't have to, yeah, so we could definitely call it a, that's another policy. This would sort of be the umbrella of the library building, like, maybe the lobby, um. You do have op-ed people in the lobby on the floor. And I should also mention, this has been due by legal, they're okay with language, so. I'm, I'm perfectly happy for trying to clarify the language for people that feel like it doesn't make sense to them. But just also know that people, it's, um, doesn't have a problem with their own. Is there anything besides sleeping that people uh, talk about?
Overall, I think it's much more clear, you know, just the, like, clarification. I assume that this document is a. Talking point document. This is your public document that starts a conversation when you have to talk to someone about these things. So gravity is, I think, really important in this case, and it seems to be pretty straightforward. I mean. I didn't catch the ambiguity about sleeping, but I, I agree that that sentence could be clarified a little bit, but overall, I appreciate the. You know, limiting verbiage in this document, because this is gonna be, this is your public conversation starter. When you have to address individuals.
We, Jason and Sam, could we ask you to work on that one sentence and, and handle it quickly next? And encourage people who have thoughts about how that sentence might work to share them with Jason and Sam.
I would also, I think. Because we're getting caught up in this language here, if you could have it just like plain without the red lines there, I think that will make it more clear. The red lines are very helpful to see what's changed.
Yeah.
But I think when we're trying to work, and I think that's a little confusing what is and isn't there.
You could do both. You could do a red line with a clean top.
Yeah, thanks for, for some good work on that.
One more question.
Yeah, of course.
Um, the new part of, of, uh, three ten, you know, like three ten, um. It seems like a new piece altogether, and I'm wondering if you can just explain why you decided to add them.
Yeah, sure, I can talk to them soon.
We can talk to the team, but it, it originated out of, um, uh, new, um, behavior that's been coming into the children's room.
We just have walkers or people that are hanging out there too long that aren't. Or just any services that are offered in that area.
Interacting with young people, um, that are unsupervised, uh, adults and right.
And legal said it's okay for us to limit access to part of the building to adults.
Yeah, with the caveats of, you know, if you're there for to get the materials, um, and less so to just be. That's the same exception. The same with the teen center, which is something that we've had as well, where Opus College.
Right.
Pinged, it's, when you turn the day, and it's kind of just like an explanation, but you're, I know there's no clear right now, but in about two hours, there's. It's clear here, uh, space, that would be. Uh, there are tables available to you on the second floor. Some directly outside the space. Saying, I just see like, I'm using, I see the sign.
So how will this be implemented? Do I talk to single adults that are in the children's room and ask what they're doing in there? The staff look for that?
They're pretty good about when people walk in, hi, welcome to the children's room, is there anything, um, that I can help you find? Or is there anything that you're looking for? And usually the, and this has become our view, but what has been necessary, um, out of the last, um. Six.
And you just tell them they need to leave the area?
Um, if they're, usually that sentence right there will stop them. They're like, oh, you've already.
Looked at me.
You, you, you know me, you, you, well, we've interacted, um, and that will stop the behavior, um. If we have, uh, and then yes, it has been to me to go and ask, um. Individuals that are not actively using the sit, the room for finding children's material or have a child with them, I will ask them if. They would like to go to an area where they might be more comfortable around people that are on, and. Some tech to get pushed out, uh, there's no rule of about that, um, and then other times.
There will be.
It's like, okay, all right.
And I've seen Angie's staff, I would say almost every number of your staffs navigate this, and. I'm really confident in their ability to, to do this in an equitable way. We know that we have adult patrons who may come in independently. Who, um, read materials from that section, that they are certainly welcome to engage with the staff, to engage with the collection.
And that's the way you think.
If somebody were to walk in and just say, oh, thanks for the welcome, you know what, I'm just checking out the library and I'm walking through, that's great, you know, welcome to the children's room, take your time. But if it's somebody who is, um, monopolizing staff time or behaving inappropriately to other patrons or to staff. We, we wanna have a backbone of policy that we can say, no, we've thought about this, and this is a supportive decision.
And there is still the caveat, language on there.
Exception.
Exceptions, so that we can, so significantly, that's come up for. Are the different disabilities, um, most likely commonly used that are vertebrae in the children's room, ten children's program, we've never. Um, same with teens, and also, oh, because we've had teens age, technically age out of the teen center, but still, he's still attending. City high, the different high schools have programs for younger, older, but you're still, so, um, and still a part of the teen center. And, um. So that comes still. Uh, it did come from Boston for the library as well, I didn't touch on that anywhere in here, but I, we've been talking about it as a concept. Sort of figured there was a language that could heavily pass these in the cluster, and then I found this, so. We just modified it to fit our spaces better, but. Legal had some comments about mostly just about the.
Age.
Eight, twelve and under.
Right.
Because we always struggle with that when middle school went to junior highs. And then it was pointed out, there's still a junior high at the junior. And so I have language born here towards your grades because that's what we tend to say in the center. And uh, now you're kind of a teenager as well, so.
And just do a little phrasey or a little in the interest of gravity. That um section in those interested in children's materials while retrieving or using resources from the collection. Seems a little long. Can it just be those retrieving or using resources from the children's collection? To make it a little more straightforward in line with the language from some of the other. Um, policy statements. Just kind of skip the the interested in materials piece.
Sure, hey, read it.
Okay, and those. And those retrieving or using resources from the children's collection. Does that hit the same note? That you were shooting for? I don't want to take out something that is important. In the interest of gravity.
Other thoughts on the policy?
Just because I'm having a moment of amnesia. Do we have protection? We have some policy about. Um, adults not using the bathroom in the children's room too, that that's committed to children. So that's open to, so this person could come in and say, well, I want to use the children, the bathroom in the children's room.
I have that.
And.
The only bathroom, single armed, yeah, bathroom.
Right. So that bathroom is not committed towards children and caretakers. It is open to any just persons that need to use the bathroom.
Yeah.
So you have, there's a break in this.
And we've had at least one instance of somebody um using the lactation space. For just kind of a quiet area as well um. But again, the staff are very attuned to what's going on in the room um, but. I don't know that we can put a limit on the bathroom itself.
Oh, you know, I don't think we can. There was a state law that, but I don't know.
Something.
There was something um and I I think we have to consider because of the family. Or not family, it's a single occupancy restroom. I think there is even something about calling it a family restroom. I think we have to call it a single occupancy restroom now too um. And yes, um, usually that's the comment I get when I.
Right.
Say, uh, you know, can I help you find that your children's room and they want to use the bathroom because the building that locks. And that's what, that's what those two percent belong.
And just to be clear, what Andrew's saying is it's the only one with lock the door to the outside. All of our public bathrooms have.
Make it safer.
Right.
Anything else? Thank you all. Bring us to the third quarter financials. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, no, there's gonna be some revision. Bring it back. We're gonna fix the sleeping. Yeah.
Don't listen to me.
Uh, I'll always listen to you. Oh.
You might forget. She wants a second that she's crazy.
But I think that does bring us to the uh third quarter uh financials. Thanks.
So third quarter is when um we start to see things kind of come in together for the end of the year um. And like I said in the memo, I feel comfortable with where the budget is right now. There, uh, we've had a little bit of. Sort of bottom line volatility volatility in the past few months. Um, nothing out of line with what's normal, but Jen and I have been watching it really closely. Um, I think these numbers are fairly similar to previous years. The finance committee met, we had a a really good conversation um, nothing sort of arose to that groups um. Nothing was very concerning. We didn't have any really deep dives into particulars. But more than happy to talk about any any entries on the memo or any um. Anything on the news reports that were included um. Or the statistics. As a reminder, the chart of accounts that John put together was included in the packet. That's a really good resource for. You know, I'm interested in hearing a little more about outside printings and that that will give at least an introduction to. Those questions, but we're, we're happy to answer any questions if folks have.
Any questions? Right, there ain't no questions. Well, this brings us to staff support. Article 12 words. Director's report. Our special meeting also is final.
I counted, I did a little agenda count on the website. I think this is my ninetieth board meeting. Because of all the special meetings during COVID, uh, so it, that felt like. It's a lot of time to sit at the table. Um, so I gave a brief update on Enrich Iowa. There is no additional information right now um. But. To be clear, we have, we are not delayed in any Enrich Iowa funding. The the item that's delayed is the agreement for next year. So we don't know that the resources will be limited or changed in any way, but there has been some communication. Amongst libraries sort of wondering what that will look like overall. Um, we've gotten a little bit of community interest in it. And we're, we're working hard to help people navigate understanding. The difference between Enrich Iowa and IMLS funding, which I think are are two things that are getting some attention and for some people are sort of. Overlapping in a way that isn't completely reflective of how that funding comes in and is used. But we're, we're working on additional communication just to make sure that's all clear. Um, and then documented some of the steps happening for the director transition. Um, I think that there's, there's really great confidence amongst the leadership team and the staff in general. That Ann and I will create a smooth transition and that that will be as seamless as possible um. And we'll work really hard in these next weeks to streamline the. Sort of introducing Ann as the interim to our stakeholders um at different groups. The timing works out pretty well. We have an IAPL meeting coming up. We'll have a Johnson County Director meeting coming up. So some of the groups that she'll be working with as interim um and just have an organic opportunity to. To integrate a little bit, which will be positive um and. Uh, I want to also just touch on on the gratitude I have for the board. Um, I really can't imagine. A more dedicated and engaged board that I've had here and even through the board transitions that have happened um. It has made just a huge difference in the experience of being the director and I thank you very much for all the support.
Thank you, Ellsworth. Any, any questions for Ellsworth? Okay, uh, children, I think is the next. Summer's here. No, no questions for Angie? Okay, how about collection services?
This was just really interesting and sad. Just another system question.
This feels like the, at least the library book industry is imploding a little bit.
Yeah.
If we are working to get Ingram, we have Ingram's account, so we're gonna try to hook up the book vendors too, so that we have. Multiple ones that we can go through and some of the, we're looking at a new integrated library system, our computer system, and some of them integrate directly with those. Under so we can see the book prices from all of them within one record, so. See what, what we can use to.
Anything else for anyone? I T.
And very interesting. Good investigative work.
Um, and that brings us to the development report. Questions for Katie or Katie, anything you want to add? Um, I will jump in to tell you what a fantastic event the bright future was. I think it was a lot of fun and the energy was amazing.
Thank you for that. I'm deeply appreciative to the library staff, um, vote boards, the the grant trustees here, the. Transfoundation Board for all of the work that they put in on the special shout outs. Um, really here headed the planning for those um in the department and did an incredible job.
Have you had a chance to analyze the survey results?
We got a lot of really wonderful feedback um and some really great constructive feedback. So um, I, you know, we like to be in a place of non defensive receiving of. Of uh um information when we, especially when we take on new things, but in a ongoing way, it's one of our our values. And our department and so um, yeah, we received some really great feedback.
Looking forward to next year's event.
There will be an experience.
So I think that brings us to President's Report. First off, I'll um Bonnie and Anne have been officially agreed to um. Serve as a represent representatives to the foundation board, so thank you both for, for doing that. Um, and I have assembled a working group, I guess, um. To help with the search. Um, Robin has agreed to uh chair it. Joseph and Bonnie will serve on it. Did you heard, uh, we met Melody, she'll be serving on it. And Andrew will be serving on, the staff representatives were chosen by their staff group, so somebody. We have one from management uh and one from non management positions. Um, so. At some point in the future, that working group will present some finalists to the board and the board will choose a a new director. Um, during the time that that group is working, the city attorney has advised that communications be. One way only from the working group to the board. Um, I don't think that means that you can't ask a question, but don't want to have any. Appearance that the board is doing the work of the search um in, you know, some secret way, so. I've the um county attorney or the city attorney's preference is. Uh, written reports to the board to keep the board up to date on the progress.
Written reports to the board for our meetings or at that point throughout the process?
I think it's up to you.
Yeah.
Up to the group to figure out.
Have you all started meeting?
No, they just got a point at this.
No, but about three seconds ago, we we arranged.
So, thank you. It's gonna, thank you, everybody who's who's gonna do that. It's gonna be a lot of work and. As I think I've said several times so far, it's fundamentally the most important thing the board does is is to hire the director, so. Um, it's really important to get it right. Um, and my last item is to uh thank you, Ellsworth, for your service to the library. Uh, it's, it's really been um. Very gratifying to work with you and to learn from you and to watch what you've done for the library um. You leave a super solid, attractive place for someone to succeed you. Uh, and and I'm grateful for that. Um, the staff organizing, I hope I'm not giving anything away, a celebration of. Uh, Ellsworth's uh tenure and we'll be invited to that and that'll be our opportunity maybe to say a few more nice words about. Ellsworth, so long as he tolerates him. Uh, are there any announcements from members?
I just have a very quick one. I have to leave and put on my pajamas because I'm reading Storytime at my home library. It is pajama story night at Lucas Library tonight.
Yeah.
Off to read some kids' books to some kids.
Are they gonna be sleepytime books or what?
There's no particular theme. It's fun read alouds.
Okay.
I will be reading, read the books, read the book, Lenning's. And families, so.
Are there any final committee reports from any of the committees from advocacy? Yeah, oh, yeah. So let's pass that around. Remember last uh time we looked at um. A statement that the advocacy advocacy committee had worked on. Um, this is the same as what we looked at last time.
I think there was a minor revision that carried out another, or Jen probably knows where it was just there or we're just breaking off. Um, no. My plan, Jen's type, would have backed her up. Um, I I think what we were looking at was. Jen correctly, there was a minor tweaking that happened here with some of the verbians and I mean. We were looking about preparation for marketing to do a layout for us, so that we can get a poster around the library. So what we're asking tonight um is to have everyone review it, just we're in final um. The final draft of this and to grant permission for marketing to move forward and allow it to not only be laid out, but to be posted. Our goal originally was to put um the signs in front of the somewhere in the entrance area, not a lobby area, but we'll be open to where the staff thinks is most appropriate. To post it. Do we have permission to vote forward?
Great, I like it too, yeah.
Yeah.
It's good.
I'm relieved because you're the one who can do it.
Elegant and it's concise. Kind of go together, actually.
I mean, the idea is not only to remind the public our values, but also reinforce it that these are staff's values and that we're standing behind them in times. Of criticism from the.
Right. Maybe it's okay to go along, go go forward with informal consensus, I don't.
Okay, we don't even, great. Um, so we will trust marketing to do layout and have. So that it's.
Would you like to see a draft?
It'd be great if I or Tom or I can see here.
Uh, why don't you clarify?
Just to make sure, but um, you've done such strong marketing materials in the past that I have a little question. You have experts at words now.
Uh, any report from the finance committee?
Well, pretty much what Ellsworth has said, we've kind of looked over the. The pluses and minuses and they come close to balancing out. Uh, with the more plus money I think will be left. Uh, we won't be going over the. The uh, the budget in the situation. So, uh, a lurking problem is that if we hire a uh committee. To uh, to run the search.
Yeah, consultant.
There's nothing in the budget for that.
Right.
Yeah, so the money has to be found somewhere and I, I don't have any suggestion about where, but.
Are we able to um use some of the funds that would have been in the salary line of an al-hopen position?
Right.
To be used towards the marketing. So there's money we wouldn't spend that we might be able to move towards the firm, the consultant. Already designated, so specifically goes salary.
The directive from the city is always to balance the bottom line of the budget. The preference is that we spend as allocated within the categories, so I think if. Well, the way we would process an overage to pay for a consultant, if that line had already spent, is we would still pay it from the consultant line. And that line would end up being two or three hundred percent spent.
Right.
But functionally at the bottom line, if that balanced against a a personnel line that was seventy five percent spent. Previous experience has been, that's, that's acceptable.
Similarly, with the overage for the interim director, we can do the same philosophy of saying this is coming. I mean, as long as we're balancing, the goal is to balance and and to be able to be transparent.
And for the interim, it won't even really be noticeable because the personnel line. We'll have access in it because of the open position.
Yeah, and again, historically, this could change anytime. The city budgets personnel sort of at a maximum level, so as if every eligible employee took out the. Most expensive benefit plans and worked the full year and everybody got the expected increases. So when there is a vacancy, especially a vacancy in a higher grade, that does result in that line being. Spent at last.
So my other question, I mean, I'm a finance committee, I could see, is the cash flow aspect of this because that. Additional funds are have to be partially available in this fiscal year. However, the bills for the consultant would come in the next fiscal year. And we can't carry over funds. So do we need to do an internal budget adjustment? For the fiscal twenty six year in order to make room for this? Is this something we should be looking at right away?
I think that. We will need to look at where that room could be found in lines.
And do it now.
And and the advantage to doing it now is that as planning happens for those funds, people know in advance. It's easier to deal with a reduction if you know about it before the project starts.
Right. A fiscal years and figuring out.
I think now that an interim has been formally appointed, that will be a conversation with. The ten and Ann and I can have and the entire leadership team can have in terms of. What are there projects that could be delayed? What projects are critical on the timeline that that we planned for? Um and how could we accommodate that? I think as we get a clearer idea of what the cost.
Right, I'm thinking what the cost and how the flow would be if we could put a down payment on the consultant once selected.
Yeah.
That would allow us to use some of the funds from this fiscal year.
And last time that is what happened, right, Jen? There was a an initial payment and then a balanced payment at the end.
So it'd be possible to spend some of it out of this year.
So maybe after the range, to maybe use to see what are structural concerns about getting an RFP out. Did we, did we locate the other people in the past?
I have.
Okay.
Send it on to you. I have a number of things.
Just think about summers and schedules.
Right.
Yeah, well, we know that there's at least one other larger library in the state that.
Des Moines.
That may be doing a similar RFP, so I think sort of time is of essence for that process.
Yeah, right away.
Yeah, it'd be good to move very quickly. Anything to report from the foundation members?
Finance committee met this week. A busy week. Finance wise, but everything, you know, the foundation is very financially robust, I would say. And um. It wasn't much, much else. A lot of accounting related things, dividends, credits. But um. No, everything's, I think everything is going for the foundation finance wise here.
That brings us to communications. I did a bunch of news articles in the Congress on any of those. That brings us to the consent agenda. We have two meetings minutes to approve since we had a special meeting on April third. And disbursements to approve to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we.
Thank you.
Approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And a second from Robin. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, so let's just take a quick look at the agenda for next time. Let's see.
Jen, this is quite some packet. I just. Scrolling out to get to the page of the calendars. I thought this is a packet.
So you had a couple of policies. We'll go back to library use, presumably just look at one side of the scene. Uh do that one at those department reports. And let me um ask you to look at the bylaws and see if there's anything. That we want to do different in the bylaws, so we can talk about that next meeting. Have legal, make sure we get language right on any changes we want to make outside of the committee stuff. And then in June, if there's anything else we should be thinking about there's next meeting.